Okay, so good morning, councilors. This is a continuation of the council retreat that we had started the week before last. A couple, a new item on the agenda that was approved with the draft agenda, but it failed to make it to the final agenda is councillor offices up here in the council office at the PSC. So I'd like to open this up for any discussion. This is something that's typically discussed, especially when there's a change in any councillors of who gets or who wants certain offices. So with that said, I can turn over to the council for your consideration.
Okay, let's consider it.
Well, since I'm the, the, the new councillor on, on board, when I went up to the offices the first time I was shown quote unquote "my office," which I believe was the vacated office, and if everyone else wants to stay where they are now, I loved that one. So all, I didn't even look at any others. So that's fine with me.
I think some of my understanding had been that historically, it had, while we have no formal policy on how offices get distributed, as far as I know, that it had generally operated by seniority. Since, ever since passing the charter and increasing the council, we have the awkward distribution of offices with three former commissioner offices and then two former staff offices. So there's a bit of a difference there.
So what are you saying, councillor Lance, that you would like the, because of the historical precedent, which I, I understand, I, I know that, that history, that seniority was the next person to get one of the quote unquote "big" offices or the original commissioner offices?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to speak beyond what councillor Lance just talked about. Obviously, it was designed for three council members, and I'm all informed, in favor of seniority because it's just something I'm used to from, especially from my military, many decades in the military. Seniority council, I know Templeance has me by about three to four weeks of seniority. But the real problem, the real issue is the setup of the office. The building, the interior was designed for three council members. We have, what I noticed from the very beginning, we have an overabundance of meeting rooms. That's one point. The other point is I heard an outrageous amount of money. I, I want to say it was like a quarter of a million dollars to divide one of the council meeting rooms into two offices of equal size. That would have exterior view. I mean, that, the two offices that Karen and I, I appreciate her flexibility and willingness to have that office. I, I don't like mine. I like daylight. I like sunlight. I like to be able to look out the window sometimes. I like more room. Anytime I've ever had a meeting, I've had to have it in a different meeting place because there's just not enough room. There's too much furniture in that small space. It's really just a closet. So I would like to revisit, and I asked the manager to look at this months ago. You know, the chair should have a big office. One of those meeting offices could be a chair office. Any of the other meeting conference rooms could be an office. We have offices throughout the top floor, vast amount of meeting rooms that are underutilized even outside of the pandemic. So I wanted to look at that. And then we can avoid this domino effect, the seniority issue, and basically just have it equal quality and size offices per district, and then we don't have to bounce around every time there's an election, or someone resigns and someone's appointed, or someone's elevated. So I would really like to revisit the issue of using some of that other space for our offices. So we have five offices of equal quality, and, and maybe for the chair, the biggest. So I, I don't know if Kathleen's done any work on looking what costs would be. Some of it, in my view, would be just moving furniture into the conference rooms. I know there's more to it than that, but certainly not a quarter million dollars worth, maybe a few thousand dollars worth. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Actually, I have a question. We should, we should answer that question. Have you looked into it, Kathleen? That's one thing. The other thing is, I just want to clarify, are you saying, Gary, that you, rather than put, make two offices out of that conference room that's at the end of the hall near 698, you're saying if no construction is done, that the two meeting rooms would become offices? Or what?
Correct. As an option to look at. And they, I didn't mention it, but certainly this would be up to Kathleen's preference, where she thinks she should be. I mean, she actually had a decent office before she moved, but it was a view towards the north, not the river, although our views of the river are diminishing with the buildings being put up along the waterfront.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to ask another question, and that would be, I'd be interested to know how, how often those meeting rooms are used. Because I, we don't really have the assignment of, you know, booking them. So the people that book those rooms might have something to say about it. That's one thing. Number two, I, if, if anything, I actually believe that the two, the conference room at the end of the hall actually ought to be the thing that we're looking at to divide and make two offices out of. The offices that are current, that, the office that I'm currently in and, and that councillor Olson is in, and at the moment councillor Bowerman is in, those are, those are ample, I think, to have meetings with even two people, two or three people, and then if necessary, you know, you can book a conference room to, you know, talk with other constituents or, or folks that want to come and, and have a conversation with you. But I do, I do think, because I had one of the small offices too, and they are, they are small and very cramped. So you do have to move out of that office to have, have somebody come in and actually have a conversation. Sometimes a staff member can come in there and you can have a conversation and, you know, be okay, but otherwise. Councillor Olson?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just, those conference rooms, and Kathleen can confirm or, or correct me, but they are not underutilized when we are in normal times. They are used all the time. There's people in and out of there booking those rooms. So the idea, I don't think that's, that we would turn those into offices is really function, excuse me, functional. And I, I'm just like, I, I don't really understand the idea that we're having this lengthy conversation over offices. I don't really care what office I'm in. If somebody wants mine, I'll move to the other one. I was in it my first year here, I'm totally fine with it. I'd be curious about what kind of price tag we're talking about in terms of doing construction. And, and I don't attach my, my worth or value as a councillor to the size of office that I'm in. So, so if somebody wants mine, they can have it. I'm happy to move back across the hall. I don't place any value on how big my office is in terms of my, my service to the community. So I, I get the idea that we all have equal offices, and that's fine. But I think we have to look at the price tag and the process there. Certainly, those commissioner offices were, were built for three, not five. But I don't, I, I personally don't want to spend a lot of time talking about what offices we're in. So I'm happy to move if somebody wants mine, but I'd be curious about what kind of price tag we're talking about to create two more of your offices.
Chair, I shared, I shared Julie's perspective on that, and, you know, I, I should say councillor Olson, I'm sorry. I, I didn't know when I said my opening comment that I had a valued office. I thought I was just, you know, along with everybody else as far as the size or view or whatever it is. I'm happy anywhere. So if somebody wants the office that's vacated, take it, you're welcome to it, and I'll move wherever you put me.
So, just a further comment. I, I, number one, I, I think those conference rooms within our office area should be predominantly for our use. And there's classrooms, conference rooms outside of that interior locked corridor aplenty. So I don't, I don't know, you know, maybe it's an overstatement to say the interior offices, conference rooms are underused. I don't know, but we should have first priority. The point is, you know, I, I appreciate councillor Olson's and Bowerman's flexibility. You just, I think we heard from councillor Lance that she wants to move into Blum's old office. I would like to move out of my dinky little office because it's not usable for the amount of times I meet with constituents. And it shouldn't be a personality thing or a preference thing each and every time we have a council member switch. There should be better office space for us, not just the three decent offices and then the two little dinky ones. And, but the price tag is it. I mean, I, I didn't make a big deal of this for the last two years because I was told it was a quarter million dollars to fix it, and I thought that was not worth it in times of frugality. So if, I would like to know if Kathleen's done any ballparking, relooking of costs and what the options might be. I just came up with the idea of using some of that conference space because it really was just about moving furniture primarily, not walls and doors and things like that that should be very low cost to reutilize the space for our office space. Ultimately, if it's too expensive and we can't move around, I'm happy to move into councillor Olson's office.
So this is Kathleen. I did talk to facilities. I do not have, I was told as well, historically, it was close to $300,000 to convert the back conference room, which actually was designed to be built out for two separate offices. But I don't have an updated quote because in order to get that, I have to spend a few thousand dollars. So before I did that, I wanted to make sure this was the will of the, the full council to bring in somebody to look at the structural engineer and make sure that we're getting an adequate quote. It's going to cost money, whether it's tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands. With regards to the front conference room, where you normally would have your one-on-ones, that conference room is heavily used when staff is here for meetings, whether it's with the council and constituents, or it's with the county manager and working on projects. So that one is very rarely empty when staff, during normal times. I think the one that you're looking at building out is used less, but it is the alternative when the front conference room is being used. So I know some councillors have used that one historically. 698, which is where you usually have your council time, that one is also heavily used when staff is here. There's a lot of public meetings that are done in that one as well. Just another, I'm not sure if this is going to satisfy the request, but another option that you could consider is the budget office. They don't necessarily have large offices like the current council office, but every office has a window outside, if that is a preference to the council. And we could actually relocate them down into financial services in the auditor's area on the fifth floor. So that is, like I said, it's, there is, the budget director has a larger office than the others, and like I said, and they have their own private conference room in their area as well. But that, and I, like I said, it's not the size that you're necessarily looking for, but it is another, if a window is equally or more important.
How many offices are there?
And also the follow-up really quick, too. Once, if the majority of the council wants me to spend a few thousand dollars to get the official quote, we're really going to have to see how we're going to pay for this because this was not incorporated or included in the budget for this year. So how, where are we going to find those funds and, you know, potentially if we're going to have to reduce somewhere to pay for that? So that will be something, too, that we'll have to consider moving forward.
Councillor Olson?
Sorry, I was just wondering, Kathleen, how many offices are on the other side of the building on the sixth floor?
I believe there's five. I believe the, the corner one is the budget director. They have one on the left, which is a little larger as well.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
And, and like I said, and there is a conference room. There might be one more, but I know that there's a conference room over there. But I'm thinking it's five or six, but it's, it's adequate for, you know, for the council if you choose to, to be over there.
But the, thinking about back when we're going to be back in the hearing room, and the location of the offices and the, and to the hearing room and the extra locked access points to the commissioner offices.
Chair O'Brien, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was unmuted before. I don't think the budget office is actually an option because it's, our office is currently, number one, our staff is, the staff is all there that are right at our fingertips. The, the dais is there, and we have a locked door, we go up that, you know, it just, it's not practical to be on the other side of, of the offices. It isn't set up for that. This is set up with the receptionist and everything else to be the council offices. I, what, what actually frosts me a little bit is if these offices were built in the first place, if that conference room was built to become other offices in the first place, it is ridiculous that we would have to actually pay thousands of dollars to have another estimate done. This, what in the world is wrong with, with us, with our staff, with how things work, that we have to pay money to actually have somebody come? And, and what I mean is, I'm assuming it would be staff, existing staff at the county that would look at this. It just, that part of this really kind of irritates me, number one, that we would have to pay to have them look at it, number one. Number two, that if they look at it, it's going to be $250,000 when in the first place, though that conference room was built in order to have a change. Well, you don't make a change for, an easy change for $250,000. That's, it's absurd. It's, it, it's unbelievable. It's, it's like the deep pockets of the government somehow are, because we've got these deep pockets of our taxpayer money, we can be charged these extorbitant fees for this kind of thing. So I'm sorry, got on my little soapbox there for a minute.
If you have, if you actually have the previous quote, I don't have it. I wasn't privy to those conversations, but if you, and the staff that worked on it are, have since retired. I agree, our staff can certainly give bids, but when we start doing construction, this is a, a standard practice that we bring in the outside person to make sure we're specking it out correctly. But if you have the previous quote that you received by the previous county managers, please forward it to me and we can take a look at that as a first step. I don't disagree that spending a lot of money on this is necessarily the best thing to do for our taxpayers' money or, you know, when we don't have money to do, but if this is the will of the council, we can certainly move forward and look at it.
I wasn't, I, I wasn't ever forwarded a bid. Were any of you, councillor Olson, did you ever see a bid?
No, it's just, we had this conversation five plus years ago, and, and those were the numbers that were being thrown out. I don't know if it came out of facilities or general services at the time, I don't know, but that was just what we were being told at the time. So we're all having this conversation because councillor Medgee wants a bigger office.
Actually, I, I don't think that's really the case, councillor Olson. I think, I think that the whole idea of everybody having equal offices is a good idea, not having this shifting about and checking on, on, on seniority, et cetera. But that aside, it could have been, Kathleen, that this was a facilities look, look see, and that's what they came up with. I don't think there was a formal bid, and it was actually Sean Hennessy, our former county manager, that gave that information. So in his files ought to be something, if there is anything, and maybe, I don't know if, if his email, if what was in his email exists any longer, but maybe Tina can check that out and see if there's anything regarding that and finding it.
Well, I think councillor, or Chair O'Brien, that probably the information that Sean had was prior information from back from, you know, 2016, when we were having this conversation. And again, I might, I believe it came from our facilities and general services department, whether they actually did a formal, where they documented it formally, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think when the freeholders decided to change our entire form of government, and then the people voted on it and decided to do it, they should have made, you know, a way to, to be able to address this at that point. Unfortunately, it wasn't. So I, I think, I think the next step, just for now, is I guess if councillor Olson wants to give her office up, councillor Medgee can move in there, and councillor Bowerman has stated that she wouldn't mind moving. So we'll have a, a moving of the guard, and in the meantime, maybe check, see if there's anything to be found, Kathleen, from old emails or something to, to find out if, if it was an actual bid, if it was facilities sort of highballing or something, and see what we find out. Okay? With that, okay, with that, let's move on to council policy project review.
So Lindsay has created the current policy list on what the issue is, what our current status is, and what the potential next steps are. Of course, that's open to council discussion. What I'm really hoping, if we can, if not, that's okay, is maybe getting some sort of ranking, even if, if it's a high, medium, low priority, just so that we ensure our staff is spending their resources on where the council wants them to. And this list may not be all-inclusive, so there may be other policy projects that you may want to add. One thing I'm thinking about is the, the jail or space being studied. That might be an item that we want to have a discussion and add. And of course, if there's any items that the council is thinking about, you can bring that up during this, this part of the retreat. So Lindsay is prepared to go over these and then engage in any discussion the council chooses to.
Good morning, everyone. So please do stop me. I don't mean this to be any formal presentation, so I'm just planning on going through the, the chart as it is, one by one, but as Kathleen said, then kind of circling back at the end to get a sense of priority. I know it'll be easy as we go along to say, this is an important issue, we need to make this a priority, but if everything is a top priority, that's not really helpful to staff. So the first one we have on here is Heritage Farm. And councillor Bowerman especially, please do stop me if you have questions. I will be speaking mostly to the rest of the council that has seen these issues before, but if you have questions, please don't hesitate to, to stop and ask. So the council has been interested in looking at some additional uses, a possible business plan for the farm. We did approve, the council approved the master plan update for Heritage Farm, and so that, that work is continuing. There is a, a group that continues to meet, this advisory core group. It's in addition to some of the existing Heritage Farm Advisory Committee and some of the other groups. There's the Friends of Heritage Farm, which is a 501(c)(3). So this is an advisory core group that is different. I've listed the members that are there. So in terms of options for next steps, we can consider implementing some of the financial changes that have been proposed previously. Some of these could go individually. The council could say, yeah, we want to take this one particular thing and move forward with that. You don't have to do all of these things together, you certainly can though. But some of the options are to increase the lease rates, increasing the, the greenhouse rates, charging for maintenance support. Right now, folks that utilize the farm get the maintenance support and get to utilize some of the equipment at no cost. We could charge. I apologize.
Could I just, could I just stop you for one second and ask if it is, if it's possible for the screen to be slightly zoomed in on, so it's a little bit easier to read? I have, I have the old list that doesn't have all the information, so it would be great because we're only, we're only doing one item at a time, so we should be able to, if that's possible. Thank you.
And then also the possibility of charging for parking. So none of these things are going to instantly make Heritage Farm suddenly self-sustaining. As you know, these would all be very, you know, small in the overall scheme of the cost of Heritage Farm. The other options to look at is to engage this core group that has been formed and actually establish a desired deadline for them to produce a report with specific proposals. They would likely need a facilitator or consultant to do that, and that's of course going to have a cost. Public Works is continuing to work with WSUV for development of a business plan, but if you wanted to set a more firm deadline, if you say this is a significant priority for us, we would like a report by June 1st, then that's going to allocate those staff resources, and we can talk about what it would take to get a facilitator and consultant to do that work.
Chair, can I, sorry, Lindsay, can I ask a question on, just in terms of where we're headed with this process? Is the purpose of this conversation to take a look at this whole list of policy items and then sort of prioritize what's kind of first on our list in terms of where we want to spend our time and effort? Is that what we're, is that the purpose?
So, kind of hybrid.
On all these before we kind of look at them holistically?
Some of these, and Heritage Farm is a good example of that, some of these, we're at a crossroads where staff doesn't know what council would like to do next, and so we're just kind of on hold, waiting for council input. And so some of these, it would be good to know from the council generally kind of what direction you're thinking, and then come back and prioritize them. You know, Heritage Farm's one of those examples where we don't really know exactly what direction the council would prefer, and then also what prioritization that would be compared to the other issues.
And actually, I do believe on the Heritage Farm, there's been some communication that for their immediate next steps, as Public Works is discussing the partnership opportunities with Wazoo for the development of the business plan. And then once that is moving, they'll come back to council in a work session to look at the results of that.
Do you know if that business plan that's being looked at is just looking at what exists on the farm now and helping for those separate little things to, to actually somehow create more revenue or something, or, or, but where does, where is that? I mean, is that what they're looking at?
I'll send you the outline. This was previously discussed in work sessions, but I will send the council an outline. I don't want to misspeak, so I'm not going to go into details, but I, I did hear the council did have a priority to make sure it was self-sufficient moving forward. So that could be part of the business plan, but again, I don't want to misspeak on that. And the staff, we did not invite staff here today because this is supposed to be more of a higher overview, and then we can talk about specifics on the next step.
So I do, I do know that we had talked about wanting it to be self-sustaining and finding ways to do that. That, that I know. I'm just curious, anyway, I, I'm, I'm just kind of curious what all it entails. Is it, is it going to be looking? Is it, is it going to be looking beyond, you know, beyond what exists there? And, and if it isn't, that's what I think we should be doing. I'll just, I'll just make that statement. In my, in, in my view, we need to be looking beyond and think outside the box with Heritage Farm. So those are my comments. And Lindsay, you can go ahead unless somebody else has other comments.
Oh, we can move to the next one.
Yeah.
Chair, Chair, I have a couple.
Yeah, I think we did. No, we don't need to move on to the next one, Lindsay. I mean, I didn't know if you were through or not. So, okay, so I've got both Counselor Lentz and Counselor Medegi who would like to comment.
Counselor Lentz, so I'll wait.
Okay, um, with regard to Heritage Farm and some of the plans, a lot of this work so far has been pretty fragmented. And it seems like we've sort of gone in a lot of, a lot of the same sorts of circles. A question that I have about the business plan, the WSU, is similar, I think, to Chair O'Brien's is, I'm curious to know the, the scope of, of what they may, may be able to advise on. And I wonder if there may be a poss, not knowing the full structure of what the WSU group will do, but if it, if it would be possible for them to coordinate perhaps with the core group? Because those are people who have good suggestions for what to do with the, the site. I also recall that in past work sessions, we had asked and given some direction to staff to work on proposals for some of these smaller financial changes that could be done at the site without necessarily needing policy changes. Perhaps some of the fees, part, some of those things, giving us a proposal for what they would recommend, knowing that probably wouldn't come to full cost recovery, but could at least perhaps lead to greater efficiency. So we haven't seen that yet. And I'm, I'm curious, it continues to be, that could be something we could do. But even though we've given direction for that, I think in the past, we haven't seen it. Yeah, I'll, I'll stop there because it's kind of getting more into the weeds. But I would like to see, just in general, the work on this become a little bit more cohesive and coherent. And I know some of that requires better direction from us.
So perfect, Counselor Lentz, because I, I, I think I could use the word fragmented as well. I was going to use the word scattered. We've been now talking about this for over a year. And obviously, we've had the pandemic, and that's really thrown things to the side in many instances. The existing volunteer groups have not come up with a business plan. I don't know if they're capable. I don't know that WSU will. We didn't get one from our Public Works Department. I'm not sure what the consultant's doing or not doing in that regard. But I, I think we need to make some concrete decisions. My, from my point of view, I, I want to keep Heritage Farm as Heritage Farm. But we need a management team, whether that's a private management partnership or Parks Department or Public Works. Someone needs to manage all of the fragmented uses that are at this location and to make it sustainable. I was going to ask about where we were on that consultant because, you know, that's, what's the due date of that for that northeast corner of, of Heritage Farm? I, I think we need to decide how this is going to look as far as, is the county going to manage this? Is a private partnership going to manage this? I know WSU would certainly like to be in charge, as they kind of are of the building and, and most of the grounds are ready. But we need to move forward. So if that's the comment that Lindsay was really making, we, we need to kind of push staff in one direction or, or another. I think this entirely, at the starting point is who's in charge? We really don't have a single person or office or directorate that's managing all the disparate, good agricultural uses that are going on there. I think everyone will admit that when we started hearing from all the, the public and all the entities that are out there, that all of the varied uses from 4H to small farms to the WSU extension research, everything out there is great. It's just all disparate, disconnected, and no plan for sustainability. There simply stated is no business management and no business plan. So those are the two focuses I would give. Who's in charge? And let's get a business plan. Or look for a private partnership to come in to manage the 80 acres that, that are out there.
So I.
If I can, can I, sorry.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
So this is Kathleen. So I just want to, I just was going through my staff. So the council did have a work session that talked about the business and marketing plan outlined from Public Works. It talked about the, you know, getting guidance on a unified vision, clear expectations and timelines for staff, selecting a council representative, fee implementation as needed, the timeline, business and marketing plan, such as the Wazoo one and Core Group membership recommendations. So staff has continued to work on this. They do have a plan that goes out through summer 2021. And I will find that work session and forward it to all of you for your reference because I know it's been a while. And the other piece, there is no consultant right now. As you remember, that consultant looked at the northeast corner, and that consultant was terminated and their services were done. And that was also reported out to the council his, in the past. So I will also get that for you as well. But right now, we do not have a consultant. The next step was simply, at that time, it wasn't just looking at Wazoo for the business plan, but the council had suggested looking at community planning because they also have a lot of expertise in this type of work. But we were able to solidify a partnership with Wazoo on this. There's been no decision for the long term of the, the purpose of the Heritage Farm. I mean, this is being, I think strategically, under the council's purview, wanting to make sure we're taking necessary steps and not putting too much on the plate. But I mean, that is certainly under your purview if you want to, you know, I can, we can certainly schedule another work session. I will send you information, though, that has been previously shared with the council because it has been a while. But I know that they want to move forward with the business plan and the marketing per the council's earlier direction.
So I, I've never seen that consultant report at all. I, I know that we've had these in the past. And I, I guess I would just pointedly ask Kathleen, what is your recommendation? Which directorate should have this? Should, could, do we just make a decision today? Okay, community planning, you've got it from here on. Let's see the business plan.
Right now, Public Works and Parks is overseeing it, and that's who's been managing it all along. And if that change in direction, and if I feel that that should be under another department moving forward, we can, but it is under Parks, under Public Works.
And are you ready? Where it stays?
Okay, so I want to say something here. First of all, I, I agree, I have not seen that consultant's report on the northeast corner. If they gave some kind of a report on it, I sure don't remember it. I know there was, there was a lot, go ahead, Kathleen, did you want to say something?
No, so I may not have provided you the consultant's report, but I provided information to the council in one-on-ones that that contract had ceased and that we were no longer using them per, because there was some process issues with what they were doing and not looking at the whole farm. So I, that contract was terminated. So my apologies on the report piece, but I, I know Counselor Medegi kept asking, what are we doing with the consultant? The consultant stopped per my direction. So they are no longer providing any services regarding Heritage Farm.
Okay, yes, and I, I figured by now they had, they had done that. I think that there was kind of a dust-up about that consultant. There was a misunderstanding, and so that was terminated. However, they were paid for something. And so I, if they did produce anything, that would be great. I want to go back to the idea of, Counselor Medegi said he wants to keep Heritage Farm, Heritage Farm. Actually, what I would like to do is have us think outside the box and keep Heritage Farm, the historic buildings, the 45 acres that have all these community gardens on it and the cemetery on it. I actually do believe and would like to look at the vacant land that is on the northeast side of Heritage Farm. And I want, I just want you to think about this. This, this land has all kinds of systems going to it. Water systems, sewer system, everything. And it is near I-5. To me, we are missing something if we do not utilize at least half of that farm for some sort of economic development. And that's my piece. I, I'll just say, that, I believe, is where we should be looking further. That doesn't mean that we eliminate what exists on the farm. We can even make that better and healthier and incorporate whatever economic development possibility that we would have on the other side to, to actually be, complement what's going on over there. But, but that's my view of it. And I see Counselor Bowerman's mic is off.
Yes, thank you. When I read this over, I had four comments, and I'm going to go back to those because it's kind of interesting how I think maybe it sort of pulls together some other people's ideas. One was, I thought, who in the world is in charge here? You have more or less answered that. But relative to the Heritage Farm mission, I'm not seeing that anybody is in charge. Maybe administratively, it's assigned to Parks, but I, I'm not seeing that mission, whatever it is, if they even have one, that's coming through. Secondly, I looked at the core group and thought, wow, that group is probably too big to really get anything done. And I think we should take a look at that. Thirdly, I looked at the, at the consultant, mentioned twice. I didn't know, of course, that the one under the column status had been terminated, but that's a good thing. I would hope that under next steps, we don't engage another consultant before we know what we're doing. And then, fourthly, having been out there to the farms, I thought, this is a lot of land for either ag research or community farms. A lot of times, community farms are pretty small. Ag research might be 10, 15 acres that they are really able to do productively. So I was wondering, what is the plan for what's going to happen with the rest of it? And obviously, the idea of economic development that you just mentioned, Chair, I think is very interesting and something that we should explore.
And, and Madam Chair, if I may, I, I don't want to be misunderstood because I think I am all in favor of economic development. And I look forward to seeing if there's any positive outcome from the money we spent on that consultant. My point was, I'm hoping that economic development can be agriculturally related, whether it's a ongoing farmer's market, these farm, nuclear, I can't, can't remember the term now, of the, of the farm, teaching farmers to be farmers there. I mean, I, we need to have someone in charge. And Kathleen, I'm not recommending we take it out from Parks or Public Works. If you're satisfied with, with that management, I just think we need to see the business, we need to get a single person as the director of that, of the overarching use of Heritage Farm. We need to look at economic development. We need to see the business plan so that everything can be not so disjointed and more sustainable. We just need to babysit a timeline on this, you know.
Okay, can I just step in a minute? I think one of the reasons why it's disjointed is the council has not been in agreement about what to do. So we can't just have this, oh, let's, you know, and no, we can't do this, and don't look at that, and, and complain that there was a consultant that really wasn't, wasn't, we weren't given the official, you know, green light to. We need to get down to business, and the council needs to decide, what is it that do we want to look at? Because this is all kind of a spinning wheel up there. And so it's our fault that Heritage Farm is where it is and that it's so disjointed because the council has been extremely disjointed on the direction they want to go.
No, Chair.
May I ask?
Gary, you've been talking all morning. Can I, can I just get in here for a minute?
Just a minute, Counselor.
A lot of what's happening is we've had a lot of turnover as counselors as well. So a lot of the background gets lost when we have people coming in. Additionally, Taylor, I'd like to ask a question. As it relates to Heritage Farm and property management and the role of the county manager in managing properties and the council role in directing, from a policy perspective, what direction we want to go. I have a recollection that our first and foremost was that we wanted the farm to be self-sustaining. And that's a pretty clear direction to our county manager. I mean, I, I'd like to get some clarification on what our role should be here and what the county manager's role is with regard to managing our properties. Can I get, do you have, do you have any sort of, and I understand this is sort of a weird, Heritage Farm has a ton of history and a lot of things going on. But I just want to make sure, part of the reason we're spinning our wheels is that we're into something that we should be delegating to our county manager in a lot of ways.
I, I disagree completely, but let's hear what Taylor says.
I think we've had a, there's been a wide-ranging discussion so far. It's covered, you know, which department manages the Heritage Farm, whether it's one person or multiple departments. I think the question of, of who manages the Heritage Farm, the property county of the, the property of the county is, is a clearer one. I think that's the county manager. The charter provides that the county manager manages the county's property. Some related questions about how different portions of the property might be. It's not clear to me whether some of the comments that have been made so far are talking about leasing, selling. I mean, depending on the specific proposal, it could fall within the council's authority. But in terms of generally managing Heritage Farm, the operations of Heritage Farm, that's the county manager responsibility under the charter.
Time, Madam Chair. That's why I had the question to the county manager of what she recommends. My recollection also, at the beginning of this, and I disagree with Counselor Olson, that this isn't a, a replacement of counselor issues because this has been fragmented for, for the last two years that I've been on the council. You know, that Public Works was supposed to come up with a business plan. At one session we had, they said, we'll take it on, we'll do the business plan. And then they came back and said, no, we can't do it. We don't have a business plan. So back to the manager, what do you want to do? Who do you recommend? Who's in charge here? Because we need to move forward.
As I mentioned earlier, Counselor, they're working with Wazoo and coming up and being able to use the students and the expertise in this area to develop the business plan. So that is what staff is doing. They did talk to community planning. And as you know, the council approved their work plan for the year. So they did not have the full capacity to dedicate to this. So we did have a very, we have a very good partnership with Wazoo, who will assist county staff with the business plan. With how the council wants to move forward with what the farm is going to be producing or looking like on a policy level, I don't think that decision should be made today because I, I can still hear that there's a lot of differing opinions. And I, I do agree with the Chair that it, you know, the, the staff is trying to respond to the council's direction on this. And sometimes it's, we have very differing opinions. So my, my recommendation to the staff already has been, and my recommendation to you, is that all policy decisions on this will continue to be discussed publicly and in the future so that we have a clear majority of who we're supporting so that we don't have any misunderstandings. So I'd recommend, you know, allow the, the staff to continue to work on the business plan with Wazoo, and then we'll bring that back in a future work session.
So I, I'm not hearing the, who's the, who is this that's?
Parks.
Working with?
Public Works and Parks. Parks works under Public Works. They have managed and oversaw Heritage Farm as long as I've been here and many years before. So they are continuing to take the lead on this with Wazoo.
So how about just a timeframe? So how about just a timeframe? Do we have a time hack? When will we expect to see some product?
We will get that updated. So yes, there has been timeframes that they have mapped out through the next summer with us, but that may change based on council's direction. So, you know, they're trying to take the feedback and putting it in, but I will get a timeframe on the Wazoo business plan.
And in the meantime, as she said, we, we're not going to make it a policy decision today. I think that we ought to be thinking about actually the kind of direction we want to give to Wazoo and the parks so they know what they're looking at, too. So I would say, back to Lindsay, this is probably a pretty high priority. So, but, but we, we actually, I think we should kind of go through these items and then maybe as we're, as we're going through it, you know, mark down as a councillor, what you think is, what you would like to prioritize, and then we'll come back and kind of put priorities on all of these. But I think it's good to hear, you know, kind of a little bit of a tutorial on what we've got going and where we want to go with it. So if it's okay, we'll move to the next one, Lindsay.
Chair, may I just make a quick comment? WSU is utilizing students for this project, is that correct?
Students will be utilized under the direction of the faculty that has, is teaching in that specific expertise. And also, also Councilor Berman, I did want to let you know that there is a long-term master plan for Heritage Farm that has been previously adopted, and I'll make sure that I send that to you. It's on their website, just for your information.
I'd like to see that. If WSU students are doing this, remember to think in terms of semesters. So April would be a good time to set a deadline for the business plan. Just, just saying, having spent the last 30 years of my life in higher ed.
Thank you. Moving on, Lindsay.
We ready for the next one? All right. Rebecca, if you could scroll down. So the next one's more just an update for you. Obviously, the, the council has worked on the Handwick Trail and the Molton Falls area. So you'll recall that DNR is in the process of looking at other parcels for a potential land swap so that the county would maintain the, or would take ownership of the land right along the Handwick Trail in exchange for other county parcels. So they've identified those possible parcels for the land swap. At this time, they're in the process of doing the appraisal for that. I, I think that process is going slower than it usually does because the DNR has made a policy that they're not doing public meetings, and they're not doing Zoom meetings for, as an alternative for what would normally be the public meetings. So they're also not going to be proceeding with the timber harvest, so we're kind of waiting on this one until the COVID restrictions are lifted and the public hearing process can continue. So that one, I know is still a council priority, but we're, we're waiting on COVID. So scroll down to the next one. So Camp Bonneville, the good news is that the Army is done with the cleanup. We, the staff is in the process of doing kind of the last button-up items in terms of the, the paperwork, if you will, in term, on the grants for that. But the actual cleanup is complete. And so looking at a long-term plan for the park, staff is working on preparing a proposal for forming a community advisory committee, and then we'll also be looking at preparing an RFQ so that we could go out to community partners and see what options that they would propose. It's a large enough park that there will be more than one type of thing, and some of the existing uses, like the firing range, that are currently there will remain. And we do have the timber account funds to pay for the master plan development because as you can see on the chart, about $300,000. Preparing the master plan and going through this process will, will be lengthy and costly. So there's that one, unless there's feedback on changing that plan, I think the question really is the prioritization there, and we'll come back to that at the end.
Just, I do have a question about the, what the response was, or I heard, actually, I heard through the grapevine, although I didn't ever hear it officially. So I, I thought I would ask the question, does anybody, Lindsay or Kathleen, do you know if at one point there was the opportu, we thought an opportunity maybe for a national cemetery there? And have we heard, have we actually gotten a no on that? Or do we, do we have any further information on that? Because I, because that was one of the things I think that the Army originally had, had thought might be an opportunity since Willamette National is full, basically, and this is kind of still in the region. Do we, is there any answer on that at all? Do you know anything about that?
I don't have any in, information on that.
Nor do I, but we can certainly ask.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this Camp Bonneville?
I do, Madam Chair.
Also, Madam.
And the last I heard about the cemetery issue is that the national system is interested as an overflow from the National Cemetery. So that was the last I heard. So that's leads me to my first question. I, I've kind of lost track of where we are on the ordinance cleanup. I, you know, a year ago, we were told it was about 18 months out, and I haven't really heard much since, other than we're getting close. So I would like an update on, on how close we are and having said all.
Lindsay just said the cleanup is finished.
So it's been validated?
So the only piece that remained is we're finishing up some of the final paperwork in terms of the grants and getting the reports done, but the actual work of the cleanup is finished.
Okay. So then, the next issue was, you know, we had quite a lengthy letter, if you will, sent to the Department of the Army. I understand they've responded. I think that we all need to know whether the county's good or needs to make some adjustments on the use of Camp Bonneville. You know, I want to know how the Army responded, and I think we should be very transparent with the public and maybe even post that on, on a county webpage somewhere. So I'd like an update on all those issues that were raised by a constituent. The last item is something I've been advocating for, and I, I hope everyone would reconsider, especially now that we've been told that the cleanup is officially done, but for the paperwork. We should put together a regional citizen committee. I mean, they're all clamoring for updates and participation. We had a committee set. It was not so regional, it was more local, and that never got to even be appointed or sit. I think now's the time for us to consider, and it could be the same size, but a regional appointment of community membership so they can start working on uses. I mean, I've been talking about equestrian uses and equestrian center, walking trails, hiking trails, riding trails. I think all of that work can be begun by the community. We have trail rider organizations that actually could do the work. We don't have to hire consultants. They could, if they have access to the property, can start walking the terrain and start mapping out potential hiking trails and riding trails. So I'm advocating that we revisit the idea of community participation. I think now's a good time to do that, especially as we're trying to roll out the vaccines, and hopefully we'll move through phases and get somewhat more back to normal.
That, just to clarify, that is the current next step, is to work on forming that community advisory committee, and that they will look at, as we prepare the RFQ and work with the council to prepare the RFQ, and then go out for that RFQ, look at the responses and work with other community stakeholders. So that is the current next step.
Because as, as the, the council that was existing will remember, there are, there's other criteria. One, self, anything that we do should, needs to be self-sustaining. We have talked about public-private partnerships in this. It's a wide, wide variety of things with regard to Camp Bonneville. But I would emphasize and reemphasize, this would be a regional park, therefore, it needs to be regional participation in, in being a part of this public group. I, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with getting started on trying to get, you know, put out something for membership of this group, and if they were adept at, you know, meeting by Zoom and, and begin some thoughts, but they need to understand actually what we're looking at, too, and not come up with some fantastic undoable plan for this beautiful piece of property. And I'm not sure that people can go out there and walk and look for trails and everything else, even though this ordinance has been cleaned up, there are still off-limits areas of the, of the park that really need to be, you know, guarded so we don't have, you know, liability problems out there. But other comments?
Okay, we can move to the next one. This is another just update the county has to have as part of our GMA. We have to have a Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. This is known as the PROS Plan, and staff is in the process of updating our PROS Plan. And so you can see where they're at at this point in time, and then the draft plan, they will be coming back to council sometime this spring for a check-in, and then we'll have the approval of the PROS Plan in the fall of this year. So that's just an update on that one.
I, did you, my list had Vancouver Lake on, on there as well. Is that not on there?
I didn't include it for the purposes of this retreat because it's just something that we're monitoring. So the next one here, the council previously, there's a constituent who has raised a concern regarding a neighbor that's discharging the firearm on their property. This one, the way the code is written, it's unclear as to the, the distance somebody can be from the property line versus the direction that they're discharging the firearm. And so the PA's office prepared a draft code change, and the council decided to hold off on the code changes until we can have a more robust in-person process. So at this point, we are continuing to just hold and not do anything until we can have that, that actual in-person public process. But the council could, of course, change your mind if, if you would like to proceed sooner than that.
We can certainly, we can do online public participation now, now that we've done it with the equestrian and, and others. If the council, you know, you can still wait until, we can have people come in, but we do have the ability to get online testimony, if that's something you're interested in.
And personally, I am not interested in doing this unless and until we have full public participation with people coming in and testifying. So I think it should remain on hold. As upset as this property owner is, there are others who, who I'm sure would be, many others, who would be equally as upset about changing this ordinance while they cannot come and speak about it, so.
So I would completely concur with the Chair, you know, whether it's fireworks, equestrian use, I mean, we've really gotten dragged down on the equestrian code, firearms. I, I think we need to have full in-person participation on such sensitive and differing views. My only question to Lindsay, and I think I had recently sent you an email, you know, and I don't know if they're the same constituents, because I've heard from more than one constituent, but I forwarded you their input, and I just wanted to know whether their comments were incorporated or looked at by the lawyers or you in that code revision. I just wanted to make sure that connect, that connected.
Yes, yes. And those concerns that were in there were addressed by the, the code that the PA's office put together.
Thank you.
Lindsay, have you made that available to us? And I apologize if I have not found it online.
The draft code? Yes. I can send that out again, but yes, that's, we've, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Counselor. Just with regard to policy items and public participation, I, I would imagine then we would be consistent with issues that we're considering in 2021 in terms of in-person participation. So whether it's the shooting or, or other policy issues that will generate a lot of attention, that we're consistent with putting those on hold until we're back in person? Is that, is that fair?
Unless, I would say that, yes, unless it's something that took place during all of this COVID, like fireworks.
No, I'm not, I, I assumed that was, yeah, I, I'm setting that aside because I assume that was going to be your argument, but I'm just asking going forward if we're going to be consistent about.
I think we should be.
Okay.
My answer is, I think we should be consistent and have public participation on very controversial issues, or, or that, those are issues that we believe will be extremely controversial. So.
I, I think Councilor Olson's point is really very important, and I, I concur in that. And, and I think what I'm hearing from the Chair and what I would just emphasize, too, is with fireworks, I'm hoping to return to the status quo and not legislate until we can get to a more public forum.
Okay, moving forward.
I have a quick question that's not related to this, but is related to the law and justice issues, just really quickly. I have a, I have a question, probably for Councilor Medveji. I'm wondering about the status of your law and justice committee conversations about body-worn cameras, and if that is far enough along for it to come before the council or for us to talk about adding it to council conversations.
Yeah, thanks for that. The simple answer, I don't know, the last time we met, we were still waiting on the sheriff, because the sheriff was on behalf of the chiefs, really doing all the research on the hardware and software. I don't know if there's any disagreement amongst law enforcement in the county, but that was, they haven't come back to us yet to have that discussion on the details. It was kind of like a number of subjects, we're, we're just waiting on them to come back. And in the meantime, obviously, there's a national discussion and ongoing state discussion as well that may inform us on that as far as budgetary and money for Camp Court. So the simple, simple answer is, I, we need to revisit it. I need to reach out to the sheriff and see when we can expect their, their final presentation.
Okay, moving on.
I will also note for Councilor Lenz on that issue that there is some legislation pending on that, so we'll continue to monitor that as well.
Will it be unfunded mandate, or are they going to fund for us?
At, at this point, the proposals right now show that there would be funding for that, but of course, there's plenty of time for that to change. So we don't know. It, it may, I, I doubt that the legislature will move forward with an unfunded mandate on body-worn cameras, knowing that that's, the, the issue really is going to be the records retention. That's kind of been a sticking point in the legislature for many years, is not necessarily the policy of the benefits and the, you know, the detriments of wearing body-worn cameras. I think that there's more universal agreement and the positivity of that, but the records retention, what that looks like, has been a difficult issue.
And I think there's a lot of policy consideration with that records retention, with how the videos are used, how they're managed. And I just want to make sure as this, if and as this moves forward, that we do retain that policy level discussion to make sure that if something does get implemented, we, you know, that it, it benefits all as much as possible, and it's worth the money.
So the next one, this is one where we're definitely looking for some council input on this. You recall that the legislature passed House Bill 1406 in 2019. Subsequently, the county council approved the, the, the sales tax. This is a tax that was credited against the state sales tax, and so it didn't result in a, a net tax increase, but allowed us to keep some of that tax revenue. It's about $500,000 per year that we collect for this, and it's for housing, affordable housing and housing-related services. It's about $500,000 per year that we collect for this, and it's for housing, affordable housing and housing related services. And so at this point, the council has adopted the tax credit, but hasn't appropriated the funds. So they're being collected in an account in the treasury and will continue to do so until the the council makes an appropriation plan for this. So at this point, we can continue to do that. Or the council can say, no, we want to look at making an appropriation plan. And we did get one of the changes, since we talked about this previously, is we did get confirmation from Commerce that the county can charge administrative expenses to these funds. So one option that the county could do is something similar to what we do for the mental health sales tax, where we have an internal grant process. It wouldn't have to look the same as the mental health sales tax. We could do something different. But we could have our own internal grant process. You can bond against the revenue. So if there was a specific larger infrastructure project, you can bond against that revenue. You can also enter into an interlocal agreement. The two jurisdictions that have adopted it within the county are City of Vancouver and City of Richfield. So we could enter into an interlocal and partner our funds together either in whole or in part. The other alternative that some jurisdictions have done is to pass through their funds to their housing authority. And then the housing authority would pay for those administrative expenses. And this wouldn't have to be a permanent thing. You could say we're going to do a pass through to the the VHA for this year and then revisit it in subsequent years. So my main question for you now is, you know, do you want to look in the short term at making an appropriation plan for these funds?
Chair, can I ask you a question?
Counselor.
Medveji.
It's because your name is Tina Redline under you. It'd be great to change that.
I know, we're working on it. It is a mystery on my state meetings. No one knows. I'm very stealthy on the WAC meetings and everything. Lindsay, I've lost track. It has a deadline passed. Is Richfield the only city other than Vancouver? So is that a known quantity? It's us, Vancouver and Richfield that are in this program?
This is not one that has a deadline, and so cities are free to enact it at any time. The only thing about this one is that for a certain period of time, we could only collect within the unincorporated county. And then as time passed, if cities hadn't collected, the county would start to collect that. But the cities can. Richfield did primarily because there were the discussions ongoing about, you know, looking at kind of a countywide, what we were going to do with homelessness. Of course, that's resulted in the joint executive group. But Richfield adopted mostly to kind of make sure they could have a seat at the table. It's it's not very much money that Richfield collects. The other thing is that smaller jurisdictions, Clark County wouldn't qualify. But the smaller jurisdictions can use these as rental subsidies. So they can provide, you know, grants for for rent and those sorts of things. Like I said, we can't, City of Vancouver can't. But that would be one reason that a city might want to if they wanted a small pool of funds that they could use for rental assistance.
So what is the council's pleasure on how if we want to get some more information and talk a little bit more about how we want to use these funds? If we want to use them now, if we want to work with the housing group? How we want to do this? How we want to allocate these funds? What's your pleasure on that?
So I was hoping to have it sit as we wait for our consultant work on affordable housing and as these other issues as we move forward on taking care of our homeless and what the legislature is going to do and whether we have more money coming to us. I would, I really look forward to bonding against whatever amounts we have. And I think we should just let it sit for right now as some of these other percolating issues mature and the funds mature, and we get a better idea of exactly how much we'll have there to bond against.
Comments?
I'd like to get some input from community services staff on this. I appreciate the idea of bonding against it and potentially of saving it for that purpose. But I'd like to have something in mind that that's for. And I'd like to hear from staff on highest and best use of these funds at this time, knowing that we have a great need and will continue to have a great need, whether it makes more sense as far as far as meeting that need to do some work now, possibly working with the housing authority or to continue to wait if there may be something in the pipeline that it would make sense to hold these funds for. But to get a sense from them who are doing this work every day with some recommendations for potential appropriation or holding.
On that note, and I will get the most updated information from Vanessa for you. But the last that I heard and the conversations that I've had is that the pass through to the VHA is actually going to probably grant the most flexibility in that arena because VHA has other funding streams. And so the 1406, it has quite a bit of flexibility relative to other legislative programs, but it's still restricted. And so if we do a pass through to the VHA, then the VHA can bond against other revenue, they can bond against this revenue, which frees up some of their less restricted dollars to be used for other programs. One of the main, you know, some of the main holes that we have within the homeless system are things that these funds can't be used to address. Some of the care coordination, for example, that's been a long term issue. And VHA is saying, if we got these funds in, we can use them for our capital expenses. And that frees up other dollars to be able to meet some of those significant holes. And so looking at the the projects, there isn't one kind of long term, big 30 year project that's in the pipeline that we would be wanting to just bond straight against the revenue. So there isn't that project that's there today. That doesn't mean that it won't be there in the future. But there isn't one today that would take up all of the the revenue for this.
Counselors, do you have any comment on this? I think we could, my my thought is, is that it is building. I do think from, as I recall from other presentations, just as Lindsay said, you know, working with the housing authority probably is our biggest bang for the buck and most efficient way of of using these funds. And if we need a new little, you know, update on what the housing authority does, what are some of their projects? How efficient are they actually with with what they use? That kind of thing might be helpful for us as as we move forward too. But unless unless the housing authority right now is looking at a specific project that they that they want us to partner with, you know, maybe we can just let it sit. But but possibly this executive board, you know, the homeless and housing, et cetera, would have some input into, you know, you might, we we might learn more, I guess, from from that committee.
So one of the projects that they're working on now, of course, is the motel. And that has been successful thus far. And so I know that Roy has been looking at potential other motel options. And so this would be something that could utilize these 1406 funds for.
Yeah, and I was just gonna gonna mention that, but there are some other issues. And so one, Community Development, Community Services, rather, is very mindful of this tax. And I so I concur with Temple that we need to hear, you know, constantly if there's an opportunity for the use. We had a presentation from VHA, and they sounded like the best partner for a pass through, at least administrative waste of funds. Now, regarding this hotel project, I I'm just starting to dig into it. We have some hiccups. And one of them is permitting, our permitting department. There's some major hiccups with that project, and we're going to have to.
I want to clarify that that's not within the county's permit. That is the City of Vancouver, which is what the letter that I sent you yesterday. So that is a discussion that's happening with the city.
The. Okay, so I I will forward it to you. I'm talking beyond that letter that you're referencing. I'll forward it to you. We have, anyway, there's there. I understand there are some county permitting issues on behalf of VHA, so I'll get that into your purview. But anyway, I I agree with what Temple said and what Lindsay said and the current project. I mean, maybe that's where the money goes. And hopefully, Community Services can inform us about that. But for right now, I just so I I would like to be in a standby mode until we see the highest and best use.
Okay, and let's, is the is the council in agreement? We're in standby for right now? Is that okay? Okay, I see some nodding heads. And it looks like we have about three, at least three. I can't see Temple at this moment, but are you okay with that, Temple? That we are a bit of a hold here?
I'm okay with a hold, though I I hope that that isn't to say that we hold on getting any suggestions for use. So just saying, let's not go spend it today. Let's get some, let's get some suggestions on how to put this to use for the community.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, we'll definitely reach out to DCS to get that information. And then I think when the council is ready after that, we could schedule a council time with Vanessa and Roy to talk about what that would look like.
Okay.
So the next one is a subsequent legislation, which was House Bill 1590. This allows, there had been a 0.1% sales tax for affordable housing. It had to be passed by voter approval. In 2020, the legislature enacted House Bill 1590 that allowed it to be imposed councilmanically. And so right now, City of Vancouver is the only jurisdiction to have imposed this. And the council previously considered moving forward with this. It would, it's a much, there's overlap in the uses between 1590 and 1406. And if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer that. But the overall tax rate is higher on this. It would be a sales tax increase. It's not credited against the sales tax, but it would raise about $3.5 million per year. So the question on this one, the council previously said that we may want to go to the voters to this and have it go to the ballot. So it's not something we have to move forward with immediately. But if the council wanted to do that, we would need to know by, you know, early August, probably ideally more like July, to have it in time for the ballot.
Okay, moving on.
So the next one, of course, we're in the process of the very early stages of doing our comp plan update that will be due in June of 2025. So the Buildable Lands Advisory Committee is meeting. Their report will be coming up later this spring, late spring. So that's one we'll continue to monitor. The next one is the rural event centers. So prior to COVID, we had some constituents that were wanting to have large events on their rural property under current county code. They cannot do that unless it's a winery. We do know that there are examples of people that are holding large events on rural properties, even though their property is not a winery. So the council considered moving forward with changes to allow events on non winery properties. But due to COVID, we haven't had any further discussions on that. So this is one that we could certainly move forward with, but it's depending upon council prioritization.
Again, I think this may be a more public input type of issue where where we will want to have a lot of public input on what we decide to do here. I mean, that, at least that's that's how I view it. I'd be happy to hear from, please, I'd like to hear from the other council members. Okay, next one. Looks like since there's no disagreement, I guess that's what that means. Thanks.
So the next topic is the equestrian facilities. We had a public participation forum, a virtual forum in October. And so Mitch is in the process right now of forming a stakeholder group and then following that stakeholder group. Mitch will come to council time with some possible draft language from that stakeholder group, and then we can talk about next steps. The.
What I was gonna say is, I hear a lot of echo. We can move forward with this as best we can. And I think the equestrian code facilities will also inform the larger general rural business. Because a lot of the, especially the operational impacts are one in the same. We may give preference or or give some kind of leeway for more agricultural and equestrian uses. But generally, I think the issues are from noise to traffic to dust and other impacts will be a broader discussion for all rural businesses.
We're getting, at this point in time, we have a work group or we have a stakeholder group working on this, correct?
Chair O'Brien, this is Kathleen. So Mitch has put together a plan on a selection of a stakeholder group with some things. So that's in my queue to review, and I'll be sharing that with the council just for your information as he moves forward with that process.
Great, thank you very much.
So the next topic is one that we're looking to see if council wants to keep this on the the list, if you will. So we had some discussions regarding agricultural permit exempt structures and whether or not to modify the code on that. And the council decided at the end of last year to to pause on those code changes and look and consider in 2021 whether to revisit that issue. So that's the question, if this is something that you still want to consider revisiting. And if so, what additional information that you may want and what kind of form that you want to receive that information in?
Comments on this? I think this is another one where we really would like to take a little bit more input from the public on to discover unintended consequences, which I think as we moved forward with it, at the very last, it was really at the very end that we started to hear from people that there were, there might be some unintended consequences. So my, my, and and it's really kind of tragic that we are not meeting and cannot meet to actually do some good work. But we represent the people and the people need to tell us what what this means to them. And so I I'm hesitant to do too much more work on it unless and until we can have more public input. But I would take comments from the council.
I'm sure. I'm wondering if we could get maybe at council time or a work session sometime in the next couple of months, just a recap or a review of, you know, kind of, we got some stuff dropped on us sort of at the very end with regard to stormwater. And I think there were some questions there in terms of the stormwater code and how it impacted the ag exempt structures. And so I think prior to maybe even giving public input, maybe we could just readdress it and relook at what we've got and where we ended up and just kind of take a second look at it more holistically.
I think that's a good idea. And then the the entire council can be up to speed on on that, like what happened at the very end where we learned things about stormwater, et cetera. So maybe we can put that on the list of work session items to have in that at least in the future, if not the very near future. I think it would be good to keep in mind that as we look at this and as we have a work session, that we remember what we learned in the work session when we start to actually do the work and make the changes if we make some. So I would agree. I think that we should all, we should have a work session on what transpired there at the end and what we learned, et cetera.
And kind of if we can include, you know, kind of as it is now and sort of a look at the issue and why we're even having the conversation rather than, you know, just, yeah, kind of just resetting the the foundation of the conversation.
So what I was, I don't disagree with what was just said, but I was going to say something different because one, I would, based on hearing that we have a different process now in place in permitting on ag exempt that would seem to have taken care of the existing issue that we saw with that blue factory, if you will. I would like to just kind of, as far as a priority, take this off the table entirely. But we should reset. And is there, are there stormwater issues? Are there issues that we need to address with code? And basically start from scratch as far as what are we doing with ag exempt? Is it as good as it can be? Should it be tweaked a little bit? Do we need more relief from stormwater? Or do we need more control in stormwater? I think, you know, that's really a different topic than what we had been discussing previously, which I think has been put to rest somewhat by the briefing that permitting gave us a few weeks ago.
Go ahead. I do think that we should include kind of the checklist of what happens with these ag, ag buildings. We should review that again. Counselor Olson?
Yeah, just that the process that community development has put in place doesn't take care of the issue of these permanent exempt structures. So and I, and I hope we won't take this off the list. And I think we had that conversation, Chair O'Brien, prior to pulling it off the agenda in our last hearing. So I'm hoping we don't pull it off the list and we actually do the work on it. Because I do think there are still some gaping holes and opportunities to improve this.
I think it deserves a full look, a full viewing of what transpired, especially when we started hearing about the stormwater, et cetera. It, I'll say that from the outset, I felt that it would have unintended consequences from the beginning. However, then, at the very end, when we did start hearing about some of the requirements with stormwater and everything, I do think that it would be good to, you know, open this all up, help us to understand all of the aspects of this agriculture permit exempt structures. So we'll, we'll need a work session on that.
Okay, so the next one, the community planning staff has convened a work group to look at possible code changes to encourage other types of housing developments and look at the need for affordable housing. So the project advisory group members were appointed a couple of weeks ago. And we'll start meeting soon and the process will take the entire year. So that's just one to keep track of. The next topic is the guest ranches. So there's a constituent who is wanting to have guest ranches. These are sometimes referred to as dude ranches. And there are other counties, including Kitterattas and Yakima County. And I believe that there are others that allow these guest ranches. So at this point, staff has looked at the other options for what other councils do. They have some concerns, some thoughts. And so the question is whether council is ready for them to come back to council time or a work session with a summary of the constituents' proposed code changes and other options of what could work. Or if you, you know, want to have one-on-one meetings with staff or anything, or if you don't want to move forward with this, kind of what your desired next steps are.
I'd be in favor of having a work session where all of the various issues around this and actually using some of what other counties do in order to implement this kind of thing. I'd be for that. I'd like to hear from the council whether they'd be interested in a work session where we can all hear it together. I think that it is the best way to do it rather than one-on-ones because then we sort of get an idea of what other council members, questions they're asking, you know, just their points of view. So that would be my thought. I'd like to hear from the council on what their thoughts are.
I agree. I just hope we're not adding, this is where the priorities get to come into play for the manager. Yes, I would like to get into this as far as one more rural use. So it should go on our list for a presentation for all council members.
I do think, this is Kathleen, I do think that's consistent with what the council's direction was when they received the proposal from the constituent was to have staff review, as Lindsay said, if the code language would work or what would need to be changed in order to accommodate that and then bring that back to the council. So that would be consistent with what the original direction was.
Good, let's do that then.
Okay, we can go ahead and get that scheduled. So the next one, this chart, because I prepared it, you know, before prior retreat, is a little outdated at this point. But of course, we continue to monitor what's happening with the 2021 legislature and will continue to do so. So scrolling down. The next one is the CPACER program. So I actually just got an email this morning. Genevieve is going to be setting up. She has set up a meeting for next week to talk with the Treasurer's Office staff and the PAs office, myself, to make sure that we have the staff ready to go on what the ordinance would look like and then be able to bring that ordinance language back to the council. And we can have a work session or we can just bring it forward in council time. So at this point, my plan is to bring it to council time with an update. And then if you want to have a full work session on it, we can do that. So, but the next step on that one is that staff meeting next week. The last one on the list is fireworks. We have the public hearing scheduled for next Tuesday to revert the county code back to what it was prior to December of last year. And then I.
Can I add on the fireworks? This is just a process consideration for the council to consider. We have, as of yesterday, midday, we received about 370 written comments on this. We are now also allowing the community to do public comment through live as well. So for next week's hearing, the council again has, will have some options on if you want any of the written comments. Like if you want to do a 10 and 10 again, right now, they're, they're about basically split between the, of who's against us or who's supportive. Or do you want to just have those be added to the record and allow those who are calling in? And if we have everybody who's calling in, is there any parameters that you want to put around that about reducing it from three minutes to two minutes or up to like an hour or an hour and a half of public testimony? So those are things I, either you can discuss this now or we can chat about tomorrow during council time as well. But just want to have you start thinking about the process for next week.
Are there comments from the council now about what you want to do or you want to think about that and talk about it tomorrow at council time?
Chair.
Counsel Bob.
I think we should probably talk about it tomorrow, but my immediate reaction is that we could be there the rest of the week if we just let it go and go and go because I suspect the in-person comment will be enormous. So putting a limit on it is advisable. What that limit would be probably should be discussed tomorrow.
Yeah, and I think in order to, oh boy. Yeah, let's discuss it tomorrow, but do be thinking about it. Think about, you know, if there are going to be people that call in as well as those who have written in, how, if there are comments from the written comments or.
Did you check IQ?
Who's, somebody's not muted, but at any rate. We'll talk about it tomorrow. Kathleen, I think you're.
We're trying to assist getting the person muted. We're good now, thank you.
And so I would ask, Kathleen, did you have a recommendation as to what would be most manageable by staff as far as the comment period?
This really is under the rules and procedures and other councils purview. I know from my understanding historically, when people have come into the council room, I don't believe that even though there is an option to stop public testimony at a certain time and only receive like written, there was a reduction from the three minutes to the two minutes. But so this is, this is unique. This is not something that the council has, has had to deal with remotely, except for this one. So yes, reading them would take a long time, but you know, we were here to fulfill the council's wishes on this.
So give it some thought for overnight and we'll, we'll bring this back in council time tomorrow about how we want to handle it. I would suggest, you know, if there's a large number of individuals who want to speak, that we limit it to two minutes. But I think they need to know that ahead of time because many people prepare their comments in advance. And then if they, if they make it a three-minute comment, then they're gonna maybe cutting off their most potent response that they save for the end. So we do need to probably decide that and post that wherever it's appropriate, if, if that is our decision. But I think we should talk about it tomorrow, just how we want to process, you know, how we want to go forward with that. But give it some thought and we'll come back tomorrow at council time.
Okay, so that finishes up the list, but I have a couple of other things that I wanted to discuss that are down here below. We've already discussed state of the county and have kind of discussed the communications and community engagement that I wanted to bring that up in terms of, you know, we're still within this COVID time and what the council wanted to do. But the next one that I want to discuss is the mental health sales tax advisory board. You'll recall that last year, we decided to suspend the process and not do grants last year because with going into the COVID lockdown and not knowing what impact that would have on the sales tax and the revenue and, you know, figuring out this whole remote meeting and everything. So we decided to suspend the process for this year. But I think Kathleen has an update for us on that.
Yeah, and I did share some of this with the council in my one-on-one yesterday. But I would recommend that we have a work session on the mental health sales tax. Just to, and it could be the same presentation that was done when it started because it does talk about the process that the council had, actually was intimately involved with that process and setting it up, about the internal and external RFP, just so that the whole council has a full understanding. It's, it's worked really well. I mean, obviously, we didn't do it this year, but it has worked really well this last year. Key stakeholders are on that tax advisory board to ensure that the services and the funding is going where it should be. In addition to that, I would also just ask the council to keep in mind that our community services department is still heavily involved with responding to the pandemic. So they're, they're, they're stretched very thin. So it might be something to consider that we look at maybe the second, reevaluate this in the summer and see if we can incorporate something in the last half of the year, just to see how we're doing with the staffing resources.
And to be clear on this one, too, there are a number of internal, we use some of the mental health sales tax funds for internal county staff and programs. And that continued in, with the 2021 budget. We were able to do that through the regular budget process. And so it's, it's not like these funds wouldn't go for anything. And so the continuation of those programs would still be allowed to happen for the 2022 budget as well.
Okay, so, so we'll have the, I think probably having that work session or an update on, on the process, even as it was, even if it is the very same presentation that we had, you know, when this began, that would be helpful. And then, and then determine really with the situation as it is, having been on the mental health tax, sales tax committee, a lot of these things that are done actually require people to get together. And I'm not sure that's happening. So we can talk about it after our work session about how, about when to reconvene these meetings. I would say probably not until we're out from under this. But, but I would, I would leave that till after we have a presentation of the process and see what the entire council has to say about that. Okay, is that all right?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. So I concur with what Kathleen stated and our one-on-one as well with a caveat. So I'm hoping that we can get this scheduled sooner versus later, especially since it's been on pause for so long and we have such a, what I consider a huge balance there. And what I discussed with her directly was basically the appropriate uses, the amplified uses within the restrictions of that tax. Most consider addictions as a mental health issue. And so that's one area to more fully explore. And then partnerships, you know, where some grants or agencies may be able to provide capital funds. We may be able to find, fund partnerships and wrap around behavioral health support. So I'm looking forward to having this sooner versus later. I'm hopeful once we get these vaccine hurdles underway, we'll quickly move through these phases. So I didn't want to just lively kind of put it off into the summer.
Okay, Counselor Bob.
Just to look at what the topics are that we're covering. I believe, I believe it was, Lindsay, I'm not sure if it was you, who mentioned early at the outset that we don't have anything on the jail and maybe we want to on our list. And I would concur with that. Also, jobs and jobs development. Maybe it's assumed that vaccines is at the top of the list, but I think it's not there yet. And then fourthly, closure on existing litigation. If we could incorporate those into our priorities, I don't know if this is the list on which to do it or not, but they should, I think in my judgment, be priorities.
So just to clarify, occasionally on the, this, what this policy chart was intended to be is the policy items that aren't necessarily the everyday, day-to-day staff items. And so things like vaccines, that's not necessarily a policy item. That's more of a staff coordinating with Kathleen and reporting to the council. Litigation is also one of those things that never comes on here because it's all executive session. So anything that's executive session, I don't put in a document that's public. So that's, you know, that is, it's a non-policy related item as well. So there's definitely a lot, the budget is a big one. You know, that's a big piece of what the council does is the budget. It doesn't go on the policy chart because, you know, it's, it's, it's the budget. It's a separate item. And so this is not intended to be all-inclusive of every topic that the council touches. This is just the policy legislation pieces.
So with, with that in mind, we, we've seen then all of these items. And although, what is, I guess we have a couple of other things, other topics for discussion. But let's go back to prioritizing some of these items that we can prioritize and can actually are able to move forward on. And so I would take some input from the council on these items that have been presented and kind of where you'd like to, what are some of the things that we, we want to prioritize?
I'm most afraid to speak up, Madam Chair, but, you know, regarding the jail and other capital facilities, I mean, that's going to be a huge undertaking. We have so many efforts ongoing right now that are going to impact the jail besides the pandemic, from arrest diversion to jail alternatives, to therapeutic courts. We have so many ongoing initiatives, some new, the arrest diversion is a new one. And that all directly impacts what our jail population will look like. So as far as looking at the jail, I think we can kind of push that off to the back of the list. I mean, I would like to get to working on some goals. for our permitting department. How long to process a permit? What the efficiency of the process is, how that looks for the customer, you know, have more of a customer oriented, easy process. I, you know, these are all administrative management issues, but for all intents and purposes, everyone looks to us as to solve these problems. We do manage the manager and the manager manages the directorship. So I, I would like to set some goals and milestones as a policy as to how we're going to approach permitting because it impacts almost everything we, we do, from adding new properties to our tax rolls, you name it. It, it's causing a lot of hardships. Same kind of comments for code enforcement. You know, maybe we need to neck that down a little bit. Maybe turn to the courts for more relief, but focus our code enforcement to be consistent and fair and, and actually have consistent results. And then the other area I would really like to focus on is code in general. Do we, is there code out there that our constituents can complain to us about or our different departments can direct us to that should simply be eliminated or mitigated or addressed? I, I mean, I'd like to minimize wherever we can any friction with our code on our public across the board. I'm not sure how to best go about that to start identifying code that we could either change or eliminate to make life more efficient in Clark County.
So essentially, Councilor Medgee, what I understand you to be saying here is that you'd like to add some things to this list and either add them to a higher priority or at least add them to the list. They are kind of, I mean, I would, I would actually agree with all of those. I think the permitting process, we've addressed that in past years with, with a consultant. And I do think that it is, it continues to be an issue in our county. Also code, well, the code enforcement, I don't, you know, I don't know. We, I guess we could look at that. But as far as the code in general, I actually think that we should have, we should talk about as the council, making it a policy that we go through our existing code and eliminate or downgrade anything that goes above and beyond what the state requires of us. Not make anything more stringent in our county than the state already requires of us. And those are, that, that is what I would like to do with the code in general. And when our constituents come up with some things, those, those kinds of things, Gary, I think should come up in a, in a council time meeting where we can get a feel of the entire council about where we would like to go with that. If it's, if it's a particular issue, are there three people that want to go forward and have staff look at that code and, you know, discover unintended consequences of either getting rid of that or, or whatever. I mean, when you're talking about ordinances and code and, and so forth, there are unintended consequences that happen when you mess with it in any way. So, but I would, I would open it up for councilors to comment on what Councilor Medgee has just brought up.
I'm sure. So I agree that these should be goals, but these are topics that we should discuss as we talk about county manager goals. She's the one who drives the business. She's the one who runs the business and it would be our direction to her to say, you know, show us how you're going to improve the permit process or permitting and let her do that work. Not us set goals for permitting and not us set goals for code enforcement, but to, to put that into her, well, it's already in her, in her job description, but to, to put those into her goals and how we, how we evaluate her, to let her manage those problems because that's why we hired her. So I would, I would agree that those are important issues that we still need to, that we still need to deal with here, especially with the permitting. It's a nightmare, but we're hiring a community development director, hiring a permit center manager. She's in charge of that. She's doing that. And I think we just put that appropriately in her goals. And then how we look at cleaning up code, it's a big book. So it's a big job. But anyway, I just want to make sure we, we make sure we're, we're staying in our appropriate places with regard to our involvement in day to day business.
Other comments?
Say, I, I agree with that. I agree that especially permitting is something that continues to need to be addressed, but I'd like that to be housed in the, in the, you know, the proper area and work with Kathleen on, on, you know, her plan for how this will, this will work out.
Chair, if you're looking for what on this list that's before us should be top priorities. Mine based on our discussion today would be the first one on Heritage Farm. That certainly got a lot of discussion with some specific things that we're looking for by way of follow up that should come to us. And also in that top group, I'd say Camp Bonneville, basically for the same reasons.
So priority one and two?
Or just if we have groups, I'd put both of those in the top priority.
Other comments? I, I do think, I would agree that Heritage Farm would be a good one to, to get, get going on what, what we have talked about thus far. And, you know, once you see the master plan, Councilor Bowerman, that may help too, but and Camp Bonneville, maybe getting started on how to go about doing this regional so are there other comments about this, this list or even, yes, I would say our code book is a big book. And I would say that there, you know, anytime we're relooking at any code, that should be a policy. I guess that's what I'm suggesting is that the policy ought to be with us unless, unless there's some very specific reason why our code would be more stringent than the state. We need to take a very close look at that. And I would like to see it not be any more stringent. But back to this list, are there other comments from councilors about how you would like to prioritize?
Agree that Heritage Farm should be a high priority, especially council developing consistent consensus on what that direction for staff should be. Also Camp Bonneville, I would agree on having it in a priority position. I'd like to see the Seapacer and the Guest Ranches, I think also be higher priorities. Part of my thinking on that is that hopefully they are not long and complex. So by adding them to priorities, they might, we might be able to achieve something. And while it's outside the grid, I do think that the conversation around mental health sales tax is one that I'd like to see as a priority.
Councilor Lentz, what was the, you said Seapacer, mental health sales tax. What was the other item that you mentioned?
The Guest Ranch code?
Okay, thank, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, so pretty much everything's a priority. I know Kathleen doesn't want to hear that. I mean, I, I want to hear about land use planning and rights of way for a third quarter across Columbia River too. And I know that's a massive amount of work for staff to work, work on. I, I just want to go back to the permitting department because, you know, that it's a charter issue for sure. But it's one that, you know, we, we had a consultant, we had a citizen advisory committee. All the improvements were supposed to happen over a year ago. I don't know if any one of those improvements that were identified by the citizen committee and, and the consultant were ever put in place. This, it's a policy issue. It's a management issue for us over the county manager. And whether that's in the context of a plan with the county manager as basically as part of her contract and goals and I, we need to put some milestones. We need to fix this. That would be my highest priority at this point for the county because it cuts across so much of our revenue stream, economic development, our ability to attract, well, it's quality of life for homeowners trying to build their own home. I mean, it just, and we have issues across the board that we've known about and probably for decades. So I, I want to be able to get to this. I want to be able to sit down and have agreement with the council on, you know, hey, in six months, we, we want these improvements put in place. Do we need to change code? Is it confusing to staff? You know, what are the issues here? Is it just a cultural change that we don't really have people that are customer focused? Is it training? These are all issues that have been identified over a year ago with great effort and cost. And yet we've had some improvement. We've had some personnel changes during the year too. So that would be my priority that we take a more active role because that's, I mean, it's the most consistent weekly subject by constituents to, to at least in District Four about inequities that are occurring and delays mainly. It's mainly the delays that are, that are occurring. Most of the other cities have a much better reputation, even here in Clark County. And I'm tired of hearing that, boy, we'd rather build in, in Camish or Vancouver or Battleground because their permitting department is so easier, so much easier to deal with.
I'm sorry, just, I just want to follow up on that just quickly. That Temple especially, Councilor Lance, because she's in the first district, may not have the same kind of complaints that we have. Those of us who are in unincorporated Clark County and must go to the planning department, it is a, an issue that needs, must, must be addressed. And the, the management part of it, yes, is the county manager. I think that we, we definitely need to make it clear that this is a high priority, that our permitting department gets cleaned up and we stop hearing how everybody else wants, that where, how builders and how, and can, like Gary said, just people who want to build their house or put something up on their existing property. They are, you know, like two years in waiting. It's just, it's absurd. It's, and it needs to change. And I think that can be a policy that we put forward and then allow our county manager to manage and take care of it. But Councilor Bowerman, you have your mic off.
I was just wondering from Lindsey's perspective, I, I thought that Councilor Lance's addition of the, the three additional items was really very good. So that would give us a list of five from the, the paper that you had presented us, Lindsey. Would that plus permitting be what you're looking for? Is that enough? That's a lot of priorities. Is, is that the kind of thing that you're looking for, for direction?
Right. I mean, I think that, you know, the, the permitting topic, as Councilor Olson perfectly mentioned, really is a, a county manager thing. And so that's a little bit separate from, from my purview. But in terms of the Heritage Farm and Camp Bonneville, you know, the good news with the list of having Heritage Farm and Camp Bonneville, the Guest Branches, Seapacer program and Mental Health Sales Tax, those touch on different county staff. The Heritage Farm and Camp Bonneville is going to be one set of staff, but the other programs are all different. So that's something where if they were all within one department, maybe more challenging to have five parks priorities, for example, because we only have one parks department. But given the fact that there's a breadth there, I think that that's doable. You know, the Seapacer program, as Councilor Lance mentioned, that, that's not going to take a big lift. You know, it's making sure that staff does our due diligence, that we are prepared, that then we can come back to council to implement the ordinance. So that's not a huge lift on the part of staff. Mental Health Sales Tax, that's going to depend on kind of what direction the council ends up wanting to go. So there's not one particular thing. I'm not looking for priorities, one, two, three, four, five. It's more just, you know, hearing from the council. If the council were to say, for example, hey, Heritage Farm, let's just take a wait and see approach. That's a lot different than saying this is a priority for us and we want to have an action plan seen rather than later. That changes how we, we approach it, but it also isn't helpful if everything's a priority. So there's not one definitive answer that I'm looking for and really rarely ever is there.
Sarah Bryan, if I may, this is Kathleen.
Go ahead.
A couple of things, you know, I certainly know that there are opportunities in our permitting department and others. And, and as you know, there has been some changes and continue to be changes that will happen and there will be changes in streamlining that process. And we're not going to reinvent the wheel. We will go back and review what has already been done and has not been implemented prior, in prior years. So, I mean, that's heard. These things do take time. I'm not saying that it's not going to change, but it will, but it does take time. You know, if there's a culture shift, that's under me. So I, I hear you and I agree and will be moving forward with that as well. And code enforcement as well. I mean, they, how we are enforcing is under the county manager responsibility, how we're enforcing code. So I know Mitch has some ideas that actually sound pretty good that I'll be bringing back to the council with him as well for consideration, just to get your input because while this is operations, I do value the council's input on these as well. On the policy side, one thing I know that is important, I know I mentioned the jail when we started, but that is something you're going to be hearing about from the sheriff's office. They have, are reaching out to me, the courts and that space needs because we do have, some of it is property management where, you know, where we're putting people and stuff, that's operations, but the larger policy conversation on who's housed at the jail and what is that going to look like moving forward is something that's definitely under the, the council's purview. And I know just in recent weeks, the sheriff is escalating this as well with the other electives and with me. So he might be reaching out to you as well with regards to that. So there, there might be some timeliness on that one as well if the council chooses to move forward with that.
Okay, other council input, please? Okay, so what we have then is it sounds like we want to go forward with, moving forward with Heritage Farm. And that would be, I don't know whether we need to further instruct or give, what do I, instruct isn't really the word, sort of give parameters maybe for the, no?
We'll, we'll come back. The, we had a direction on the business plan, so at a minimum, I could put
The staff that we had a direction on the business plan, so at a minimum, I could put a council time agenda just to share what that business plan outline is before it's even finalized with the council for your information.
Okay, okay, that's great. Let's do that. And then Camp Bonneville, looks like that's, you know, the process there is going to be this regional group and how we choose them. And CPACER was another one of the priorities as well as the Guest or Dude Ranch idea. Are those, does that meet the approval of the council for this, for this time? Are there other?
Item I had is the mental health sales tax.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
And so my, my question for the mental health sales tax, knowing that Department of Community Services is intimately involved with the COVID response and the stimulus funding, is that something that the council's wanting right away? Because if so, we might need to look at other resources in the county that can help with that process or in the summer. And we will be scheduling that work session to give some background as well.
What I'm thinking we want is that work session, pretty, you know, have that work session and then, and then determine at what point, and I'm saying maybe later in the summer or whatever, that we reconvene whenever we have, you know, when it works, that we have the staff to do it, we have, you know, all of those things that it takes to be able to process this. But it, I think it would be good again to go over the process of the mental health sales tax, how, how we determine who gets it and, and how we put out these, how people come in with grants, et cetera, and how they're looked at. I, I just think that would be good for the whole council to review again. Any other input from the council with regard to the priorities here? And then we'll move on to our next item. And is it, and I guess I should just clarify, is it, is it clear, Lindsay?
Yes. And the last thing I wanted to mention, so at the beginning of the, the COVID, when we thought it was going to be two weeks and then maybe a month, we didn't, I went ahead and just canceled the one-on-one meetings that I had. We continue with that pattern and I think, you know, email and phone communication has worked. But if you want to resume having a weekly one-on-one or, you know, an every other week one-on-one, just let me and Kristin know, I'm happy to do that. But that's it on this item.
Madam Chair, could I suggest maybe just a five-minute brief rest stop before we move on?
Yeah. That, is that okay with everybody? If we take a brief recess for five minutes and come back here at 11:20? Is it 11? Yeah, 11:20, is that okay? See you in five. Convene then. And the economic development position, I'm going to hand it over to Kathleen to talk with us about that just a little bit.
Yeah, so we did talk about this last time. I did send out what was posted for that position the last time around, a year, I believe it's about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer, that the council had reviewed at that time as well. So I am planning on getting this posted by the end of this week. But if you have any questions or input on that job posting, feel free just to let me know, but it will be heading out here pretty soon.
Kathleen, is that public information at this point?
That it's going to be posted?
Yes.
We have not, I mean, this meeting is public, so I would say we haven't advertised it yet, but you can, it's not a secret that we're going to post it. So if you want to share it with anybody, you can certainly do that.
Thank you. Okay, I mean, this really was the last thing on our agenda. I think it was probably necessary that we took a little bit of a break, but now that we're back, is there, this is the last thing on our agenda. Is there anything for the good of the order then?
So I had one additional thing also about the county manager goals. Hearing some of your input today and then I've got some ideas as well. I, if it's okay with the council, I'll draft up some goals and send them to you and then put this on a council time agenda for consideration in the very near future.
That sounds great. Thank you, Kathleen. Other questions or comments?
So first of all, I just want to personally thank Kathleen. She's just, I mean, these are amazing times and you are just the right person at the right time to be at the ship's helm here. So I appreciate all that you're doing from COVID on. So hopefully we'll come away from this meeting with a way forward. I did, just for the good of the order, I sent, well, Kathleen, number one, I sent you that email from VHA, from Roy. The chair had asked us all to or suggested that we attend the ethics presentation. I don't know who else did. I did. Maybe I was the stuckey on that process. But they had some good slides and a good presentation. I've sent them to everyone and I sent them to the wrong Julie to begin with. So I did separately send them to Councilor Olson. The point I wanted to add, as I talked to Kathleen about this, in looking at Vancouver's, I really liked some of what they did as far as really necking down, narrowing their ethics and code of conduct to really those topics that are covered by state law. Additionally, they have a process where the complaint goes to the, to the city council's office. So I, I would like to address, I would like to duplicate a process like that with Tony Golick's office if he's willing to take that on. None of the other suggested code of ethics and ethics samples that we've had was I in total agreement on. They all have some good points and they all have some bad points. So anyway, I just wanted to share those slides that were presented as we move forward with looking at our own code for, or process for ethics complaints against, particularly against council members.
And Councilor Medgee, just to clarify for those who might be listening, when you say that the ethics complaints with the city of Vancouver are referred to the city council's office, that's not the city councillor, that is their attorney. So I thought we probably should make that clear.
So I come from a place where the general counsel and the councillor are really the lawyers. Yeah, I meant the city of Vancouver.
SEL, council, SEL, not CIL. So, so, okay. And we are going to visit that, I think, at another council time. So I'll take a look at those slides and, and the city of Vancouver's system too. So that will be helpful as we move forward. Anything else for the good of the order? I guess we will see you then. I believe we have our, our Board of Health at 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. So we'll see you at 9:00 AM tomorrow. Thank you all. Have a good day.